Let's...
I get it.
Huh? Please rise. Call this meeting to order and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Clark, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And then, Clerk Flower, would you read the roll call?
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Dravka.
President and Colonel.
Trustee Looper.
Here.
Trustee Hollenbach.
Present.
Supervisor Wilt.
Here.
Put the record down. Clerk Flower is also in attendance.
Thank you. You have in your binders the minutes of, first, the public hearing for the 2018-2019 budget that was held on May 8th, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the minutes of the Township of Riverside Public Hearing of the 2018-2019 budget on May 8th, 2018.
Do I hear a second?
Sir.
Any discussion, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Next minutes of Township of Riverside Board of Trustees Meeting from May 8th, 2018. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the Township of Riverside Board of Trustees Meeting for May 8th, 2018.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 8th, 2018 Board of Trustees Meeting. Do I hear a second?
I'll say aye.
Any discussion, additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. All right. We have...any communications today?
We have two communications. The first comes from the Riverside Juniors. They enclosed a donation and they sent this to Vera Wilt for $900 for the Riverside Food Pantry. On behalf of the RJW, thank you for making a difference in our community. Signed by the President. We also received a thank you letter from...
Who's the President of the...
Susan Zidlicky.
Okay, thank you.
A letter from People Care, Inc., thanking us for their generous donation of $10,000 and going on that it's going to enable them to do good work throughout the year. And that concludes the communications for this evening.
Thank you very much. None of that requires any action, so we will move along. Visitors, other than an item that's on the agenda that you're here to address, is there anything from the visitors at this time? Hearing nothing, we will move on. Supervisors report. It's been a pretty busy month. Food pantry, it was a big month for donations. You heard about the $900 one. Plus, we received a $2,000 donation from an individual donor. Donations of food came twice from Hauser, plus the postal collection included them delivering to the building both on the 12th of May and then I was called to pick up a carload on Monday after and at the post office. So, the pantry is full. I only had to purchase fruit this month. That was the only thing missing. So, approximately 30 people have used the pantry in the last month. The nurses closet has had a lot of traffic, so I actually asked staff for some information on exactly how many households currently have items out from the nurses closet. Discovered that there are some 167 people that have items out on loan, some far longer than the three months that we claim to be the limit. I knew that we don't enforce that very hard, but I have asked staff to follow up on the very long outstanding ones, some of them several years. I just want to verify that the borrowers are still living at the address, that perhaps they've passed, families didn't know what to do with it. And that whole thing alerted me to the problem that we don't in any way tag the items that we put out on loan. So, we're going to find some kind of a label to put on it so that family will then know a return to tag so that, not that, you know, we're trying to run people down to bring it back, however, if it can be recycled for other people, when somebody passes or moves to a nursing home and doesn't need those items anymore, we can certainly use that. There were several interviews with potential GA or emergency assistance clients, and in one case, I worked in cooperation with one of the charitable organizations within the township to get a person enough assistance between the emergency assistance and what they could do to alleviate the situation. Our bridge has had a number of instances of graffiti, so we're going to engage with law enforcement to keep a better eye on things. It usually happens at the far end of the bridge, and so monitoring is a challenge on the lawn side, yeah. But I would say that every week, the custodians have to go out there to paint over something or clean up something.
Can we put a temporary camera there for that though?
We're going to look at what we can do. I mean, I just...
What type of graffiti is it?
Some of it is just silliness, some of it is drawings of body parts, let's just say. You know, it doesn't seem to be gang-related types of things, it's just mischievous.
Do we fill out a police report or incident report on each and every incident?
Well, I've asked Bob to start noting all of that, to take pictures, and we're going to do that because we have not been and we need to.
Yeah. And I believe that's Forest Preserve Police.
Well...
Is it the...
It's our bridge.
Yeah, it would be. We need to coordinate with the county on that.
County Sheriff.
And they're not going to come over there, that's the problem.
I mean, the county sheriff, right.
Right. But it's our bridge.
Right. But, you know, it's not really Riverside Police, and it is on the far side over by the Riverside lawn, so it's just something we have to pay a little bit more attention to. Selden Fox, you will find an engagement letter, but we've moved forward. There was no change from last year, and their auditor was in here three days last week gathering materials for the annual audit. You probably also got some email questionnaires, so please fill those out. We were able to fulfill all of the requests, and I would like to, however, stress that the role of the trustees, as a matter of fact, in time gone by, the trustees used to be called the auditors. So, please take seriously the fact that your role is as a town auditor. The warrants, all of the bills are always available for your inspection in that drawer that I've shown you before. We can show you again. It's lovely that we pass all the warrants and rarely have even a question, but, you know, in these times when the communities within our township are struggling, let's make sure that we don't get into the same place and be surprised. So, I would just ask that you do check over those if you want to take turns doing it. In the past, there have been trustees who felt that that was the only job that they had, so they were there in great detail, and I do encourage you to take some time and come in and examine those things. Not that, you know, there's any problem. We were able to provide everything to the auditors quickly, but you should be aware of what's going on. The North Riverside Senior Fair was a big success. Thank goodness it's only two hours because those people really rush in and grab everything, but I wanted to thank Trustee Clark and the Susser Sikwitz for also being there to talk with the attendees, and our gifts were very popular. We had to hire a pest control company to trap a rather large raccoon this month. It had taken up overnight residence, and it was dining in a storage area, which that activity came on the heels of all of the donations of food that we had. So, there were...it was in our overflow food pantry room where things go holding before they're sorted. And the rec...I say large raccoon because it was big enough. It had attacked things like...there's certain types of soup packages that they apparently like, so it wasn't the first time that those were attacked, but the corker was that there was a hole in the wall that had been put there for access to something at some point for the heating and cooling or something like that. And there was, you know, a cover over it and just taped back. Well, that had been pushed aside, and an entire package of cookies had been pulled up and over, and it's about a foot off the ground. So, an entire package of cookies had been taken into the nest area and consumed by this character. And it took a week before...first, they baited it, and they took...put them in a cage and took them very humanely. They took them out to another location, and we're going to try to fix, we think, it probably came in through the louvers of the clock tower, which we're going to see if we can put some kind of screening on the inside to keep critters out. Anyway, so that was another interesting thing, and boy, did it leave a stink in place.
You know, do we need to hire somebody to kind of clean that up? And do you talk...because raccoon droppings are toxic.
Right. Well, the guy did...well, actually, the custodians have already cut away the carpeting that was there.
Oh, right.
And we did have some spare carpeting. So, yeah, we're well aware of it. It was very bad, and it was right before the Hauser graduation that that area stinks. Not a great thing. Anyway, but it's gone, and we're going to be looking to keep those out again. You have another draft of the building use policy. I think we're pretty close to it. I've actually coordinated, utilized as a model, the villages' contract that they use for the train station, and if you would look it over, let me know if you have any other points. I want to send it to the lawyer to do a final thing, and then we can, I think we can approve it hopefully in July. So, please take another look at that latest draft of it. The Hauser graduation party was without any damage to the building this year, although we did watch them. They had a lot of great decorations, but we had to make sure that they didn't use inappropriate tape that would take paint off. The longer hours so far are not getting a lot of activity, but we're going to keep at it. At some point, we'll reevaluate that. On a couple of occasions, it's been helpful, and it does offer us the opportunity to actually shoo away some of the junior high kids that hang around. They were more surprised than anything to see that somebody was still in our office those afternoons. And it's pretty much the same kids. They're not really doing harm, but it's...we're not a social center for that. Most of the senior activities are getting good attendance. There's probably an average of 14 people at every exercise class still, even three days a week. And however, the blood pressure screenings, I really am going to...we're going to have to evaluate whether that's worthwhile because I can't remember here or at North Riverside when there's been more than four people taking advantage of it, even when it's on a day when there's some other senior activity. And, you know, we're paying for a nurse, we're paying for an administrator for it. It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think we definitely need...can we put that on the agenda for next month?
Sure. So, we can take a look at that. And as far as a township trip, we don't have a recommendation because we were looking at a Starved Rock event on a weekend. They've already told us, don't even think about it, this place is so packed, we really can't accommodate anymore. There's not even any place to park a bus. State Fair, we could still pull that together. I don't know if I want to do State Fair every year. We've been talking about something in the early fall and maybe do a Springfield trip for some of the sites rather than the State Fair, or maybe a fall trip. There's some nice things at Starved Rock and/or maybe something like Galena. So, if you have any thoughts on that, I welcome your input. Right now, we don't have a trip to recommend simply because we've kind of run into a wall on some of the things that we thought we'd do.
Chicago Tribune has been having a nice series every couple of months, bicentennial sites to see in Illinois. This past time was all about nature. I think three months ago was architecture.
Right.
And the time before that was something else. But they list 20 different events or places to see on each theme, and so maybe if you want to go back...
Right. And that was the last thing that we looked at really came right from that section.
Gotcha.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I have a trip to Springfield to see the Lincoln Museum, and we can...I can call the person we worked with when we had the Lincoln speakers here and see if there are any upcoming exhibits.
Okay.
You know, special exhibits that we can do. I know last year, they did one on baseball and the rivalry between the Cubs and the Cardinals.
Okay.
So, if we can see if she has any good things coming up or if there are any good speakers. A lot of times, they have authors.
That sounds like a good idea. And that's all I have to report if you have any other questions.
Going on her baseball thing, you know, the Cubs versus the Sox are playing at the end of September, so maybe if you can get cheapo tickets or group rate tickets. You know, it's at Sox Park, so that's...
At Sox Park, yeah.
That is also going to be...
I'd like that double their attendance bar, so...
I just had just a thought, you know, just going off of baseball.
Yeah, hey.
They also have that patio where you bring lard.
I would love to do a trip to a trip like that. I think we would get a really good turnout.
Okay, we'll look at that.
Another idea would be a theater night. My mother-in-law and her friends go once a month, they love it. Some kind of local theater, we're not talking civic opera or anything.
You know where we should go is to that gunfire place.
Tommy Gunn's Garage?
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be fun.
What is this?
Tommy Gunn's Garage.
What it's...
It's a show slash dinner, like all-time gangsters, 1920s, all that old stuff.
Okay.
That would be...
Those are the things we can look at.
That'd be fun.
All right. We'll work on that, and if you have any other brainstorms, just let me know, and we'll investigate that. And that's all I have to report at this time. And onward, trustee reports.
As I said, as Vera reported, the senior exercise class is going very well. This month, we had a taco lunch, and then Jerry, the exercise instructor, sang, and everybody...because he plays in the band, and he plays guitar, and everybody seemed to enjoy that, although there was not enough guacamole.
(laughing). And I just find... (inaudible).
I just finalized today that our July meeting, because of the Fourth, it's changed. So, it's going to be on Thursday, July 12th, and we're going to meet over at Quintana, the Old British Home, and on 31st Street, and we're going to have a tour and lunch. And they're providing the lunch for us.
Okay. So, Thursday, the 12th?
Thursday, the 12th, yes. And that starts...we have to be there at 11:00, and it's Bob the tour, and then we'll have the lunch afterwards.
Okay. Quintana lunch and tour. Very good. And once again, if you'd like to have that information distributed, we'll help out with the flyer or whatever we can do.
Yes, and take the reservations, please.
Take reservations.
We're limited to...we're limited to 20. If we have more than that, I can call and ask if they can increase it.
All right. If it's a 20 limit, then we won't get too crazy with that. Very good. Anything else? Any...
Oh, I just want to say, I attended the Segwin Foundation Great Chefs Tasting, which was really fun. Very nice event.
Nice. All right. Thank you. Trustee Dravka, do you have anything?
No, I'm fine.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Mental Health Board.
Okay. We'll wait just a moment on that, and anything...thank you very much. All right then, we'll move on to the Mental Health Board report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Mental Health Board, the board is going to be having a mors of our strategic planning, where we're going to review the concept papers submitted to the board from agencies, our core agencies, along with other agencies, about programs that we can initiate possibly in the coming year or the rest of this year. That will be on Monday, the 18th. I'm a little shocked that all the rest of the reports that the Mental Health Board had is not in our packet tonight. So, I know...
I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, I know that we've got that. I've got the agenda for...that was printed out for the 20th, so...
I'm very sorry, I'll...
Don't worry about it. I mean, that happens. I just don't want to, you know, face the wrath, as they say.
Well, we will put that in everybody's...
So, the Mental Health Board will have its final meeting of the summer on the 20th of June, and we will reconvene in September. We've had a pretty good year, and funding is going well, and we're going to have some new programs starting in September that are going to really help the township residents quite a bit.
Those would be reports from the various agencies that Vera's missing?
Yeah. From last month, you've got the agenda for this month on there, so I don't know if something happened, what happened to them, but...
It may have been vacation load in people.
Gotcha.
Could we put those in our...
Yes, we might have to do that.
And that concludes my report.
We...you have in your packet, under item A, there are...there is an opinion letter from our general...our legal counsel, as well as after the Mental Health Board's consultant reached out to WSSRA, there is a report there of WSSRA's response regarding whether, you know, how we would go forward. Basically, the conclusion is that really although Mental Health, the Mental Health Board could support that portion that is related to mental health, WSSRA doesn't want a full partnership if there's strings attached to the things that mental health cannot support, if I'm stating that succinctly enough, yeah. Now, both our attorney and the WSSRA seem to invite grants for that purpose. They...there was some thought maybe the township should be the member of WSSRA, and that is not an option. They are looking for municipalities that have recreation departments or parks and rec...districts. However, the support that they would welcome would need to be kind of succinct. So, their recommendation basically would be in the nature of what, for the Mental Health Board, in the nature of what the Mental Health Board was considering anyway, which would be in the nature of kind of a scholarship or a support for the individuals utilizing the service. And on the township board's end, it would be wise to invite the villages that participate in our township to apply for grants from us. It would be possible to do a, certainly, an intergovernmental agreement, but at this point, I don't think we are ready to commit that kind of funding or that kind of ongoing guarantee. So, I would like to see it perhaps on an annual grant basis, and I invite your commentary to that.
Well, you know, to fund the, you know, as the board is aware, I mean, the village of North Riverside and the village of Riverside first met with Supervisor Wilt, and the proposal that that came out of that was that, and I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Wilt, the Mental Health Board would fund Riverside at 95% and for North Riverside at 65%. We had several inquiries from the Riverside's village attorney about opinions, which is why we had to bring our attorney in for the opinions. And we consulted, because we have a relationship on the Mental Health Board, our consultant does, with John, and he approached WSSRA, as Supervisor Wilt has said. I'll be honest, when I saw what the response was, I was kind of shocked, but then it did make sense because townships only take care of part of a village or a city. So, they wouldn't accept anything from the Mental Health Board, we know that. Here's what I suggest. I do believe that we ask the respective villages, which would be our township partners, which would be Riverside and North Riverside, to go with a grant application, to be considered helping the villages on a year-to-year basis. I also agree that an intergovernmental agreement puts us in a position that I don't know, you know, we've got other expenses too. But I do think that we can go year-to-year and take a look and see if it fits in there. I also don't think that an intergovernmental agreement is very fair to the future boards of the Riverside Township. The next span period is in August. You know, this is June. Let's invite the representatives of Riverside and North Riverside, and if Brookfield wants to get in, we can discuss a grant. But this request should not be at 95%. That is unreasonable. Shouldn't be 50, shouldn't be 40, shouldn't even be 30%. I realize that the village, and this is my opinion, needs some help on this. You know, the state has taken away a couple of percentage points of their sales tax dollars. Our other township partner in North Riverside is losing sales tax revenue due to stores closing, and I think it's imperative for us as a township to take care of our township residents. So, I don't mind helping out with some funding on this on a township level. And let's keep in mind, too, that the Mental Health Board is going to consider, go, it's already in our budget to help out our township residents with special program, helping them pay for that, our township residents pay for it, and pay for half of their transportation. That's a nice thing that the Mental Health Board came up with, and we're anxious to get it implemented. So, it's already budgeted, so you're going to get even more money out of this. As far as I'm aware, if we do do this funding, and Supervisor Wilt has checked on it, I've checked through it and done some research, we'd be the only township in the state that has.
That's my question. How many of these arrangements are there?
As far as I'm aware of, this would be the first.
Generally speaking, parks and recreation or recreation departments of municipalities levy for this purpose themselves, and that's part of the response from the SRA. They don't, you know, they see a conflict when the park districts or the recreation departments are levying for the same services and then to have, use a different levy from the Mental Health Board to fund the same thing.
That's my point exactly, is that...
Right.
We can't co-mingle that. I mean, we just...I have a fundamental disagreement with subsidizing other governmental entities. It's been clearly stated. But there is a funding mechanism for the villages right here in this response.
Right.
0.04% levy. So, I'm just confused as to why we were approached in the first place. So I'm, I'm, I'm just confused as to why we were approached in the first place.
I'm very confused on a lot of issues on this issue. One, does Riverside Park Board levy for this?
Well, they, I don't know that they do, however the law provides that they can.
Okay, so we don't know, so I think that would be something for us to check out.
And that's the kind of levy that the special recreation associations are used to being funded through.
Okay.
And so this whole idea of a Mental Health Board and their levy funding this is really very, they responded very negatively to that, especially because they said they are not in a position to deal with funding that has the strings attached of, oh, well, we'll pay for this, but not for that.
That's right.
And.
Additionally, I'm, we're not talking about the Mental Health Board. I think our lawyer's response told us that it's just too complicated, too fraught with liabilities to have the Mental Health Board do it. We should do it through the township board.
As grants, right.
As a grant.
Through the township.
Right. The Mental Health Board could do some scholarship types of things to, to help the residents with that, those costs, and the township could accept applications for grants and as, as we are able to help fund that.
You know, I.
They would be limited to two grants a year.
Correct.
Is that our fiscal year or our, our January?
Calendar year.
Calendar year, yeah.
I believe it's his calendar year.
I think it is. I think it does. I think you're right.
Also, also on that, though, this would be one grant, I mean, for the year.
Right, right.
I'm not, you know, we're not going back and forth. It's going to be one set amount, is what I would think that it should be. And, you know, we, of course, make out the check. If, if it's approved, to WSSRA, I mean, straight to them.
Okay, the other thing, the two other things that I'm kind of confused on are, what is this, I mean, it says in here, this is going to provide recreational programs to adults and childrens that have a physical impairment and mental disability, or any other type of disability. So, can you elaborate on what is this money going to be used for specifically? Is it going to be classes? Is it going to be transportation? Can it be education?
In terms of a grant, those are the questions that would have to be answered in the grant application.
Okay. So, and then.
I do believe that if we're going to do anything, I just, I'll take that question. One, one is, is that it would be, we would be funding the villages, our township partner villages, port, a part of their portion of their fee that they have to pay every year.
To participate.
To participate in this program for the residents of that village.
Okay, but we still don't really know what we're paying for.
Well, okay, go ahead.
You know, and people with physical disabilities don't necessarily have mental disabilities.
Right. Which is why the Mental Health Board is out.
That's why the Mental Health Board is out.
Yeah, okay. So that, and then I'm confused on the amount, because it says, you know, from $25,000 to $77,000 per year.
It's a tiered structure. It starts, I believe the first year is $25,000, the second year is $37,000, and then the third, it's a five-year deal that the.
Increase.
Yeah, it goes up to, I believe, $77,000 a year.
Right.
Three, four, and five.
So what is that increase going to cover? More programs?
It's more a matter of that's their way of, of easing municipalities into their programs. So they recognize that to come out with that right at the beginning, when you're probably not going to utilize as much in the early stages as you develop your programs and your partnerships. So there's a, there's a graduated membership fee that, that acknowledges that development.
Okay. That's.
The one thing I would disagree with Trustee and I on is that the village of Riverside actually obviously needs to help. I point out the recent article in the Riverside-Brickfield Landmark where they're accounting, I mean, $60,000 in rounding error for the village of Riverside at this point. I'd much rather they had done some due diligence beforehand and come up with their funds and said they couldn't come up with all of it, maybe ask us for some help. But the process, I just don't feel, I'm, I'm still just confused on why we're sitting here discussing this. I mean, it's just not our bailiwick.
Well, it is, it is.
And I don't see the due diligence being done by the partners that we would be going into. I, I just don't think it's, it's hinky to me. It just doesn't pass the smell test.
Well, I, I know that this funding, even at $77,000, is 1% of the village's budget, if I'm not mistaken, 1%.
Of their budget for this program?
For the year, for their whole budget.
The villages.
Over the whole budget.
The village's budget.
It's 1% of their whole budget.
Right.
Okay, which is 260,000 over budget.
Right.
230,000 over budget.
Right.
That none of them knew about.
Right. All I'm saying is, that's just my opinion, that I, that I think that we can sit down with them and see if we can help them in some way to at least get them going, so they can, you know, have a lockbox in their budget for this funding, you know.
Well, they have, there is a funding mechanism in place.
Yes, they can do a tax levy. That's exactly right, but I believe that they're, they're looking at all avenues, and that's what the village of Brookfield does. They pass it on to the residents.
Right.
And it's, I looked at my tax bill, and C-Spar, which is different than WSSRA, is they charge less of a fee to the municipality, but more to the, to the participants.
And that's the other point I have, is with the SSRA, that grant that the Mental Health Board is envisioning, I don't think it'd be necessary, because SSRA, WSSRA, is providing the transportation and covering more of those costs.
There's a cost involved in that.
There still is.
Yes, there's a cost for programs and there's a cost for transportation.
So what's the cost difference between C-Spar and WSSRA?
It's pretty substantial.
But what is the, I mean.
I, I don't know, though, because we're, we're dealing with WSSRA and the Mental Health Board on this. I, I was told that it was, it was quite a bit higher.
Right.
But like, transportation is, averages out to, with WSSRA, $6 per person.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, people, you know, the, especially the parents with the children of disabilities, they've got all these extra expenses as it is, to, to help them lighten the load, maybe make some friends, maybe, you know, develop some relationships, and help out the parents, because they have extra doctor's appointments, you know, some of these children need braces and stuff like that. That all costs these parents a lot of money.
Yeah.
That's why the Mental Health Board wanted to reach out for the Riverside Township residents, and helping them defray the costs of some of the programs that, that are provided.
And I see that as our mission, is, you know, if the family is incurring costs, we can help on an individual basis, cover those costs. But I just don't see it. I just don't see the, the partnership. I don't see, I don't have a history, there's no, I can't go to three or four other examples on how it's worked successfully.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we're in a position to be the guinea pig, and I think the original idea of having a grant to help cover township residents' out-of-pocket cost for special education is a great idea and is the road we should be going down. I think subsidizing another governmental entity is not what we levy our taxes for. I just don't.
Is there a website for the WSSRA?
Yes.
There is, so we can look at that and see.
Absolutely.
More of what they'll do.
Right.
Well, I, I still think it's important that we sit down with the village of Riverside and North Riverside to see what they're looking at. And, you know, with Supervisor Wilt, I'd be happy to be in that if Supervisor Wilt wishes that to happen, and then come to this board if they decide to do a grant request or not. But as you, as you can see, Trustee Glupfer is right. They, they do have a, a mechanism there to, to, to do that, support their special recreation. You know, in the beginning, this was supposed to be a partnership of some kind, and then, you know, the village comes to us with a 95%, you know, they want us, the Mental Health Board to fund it 95%. That's, that was totally unreasonable. And again, I'm in favor of helping out the villages. I know that they could do a, a levy on the tax of that, but I, I do think that it would be good for our township partners, and I think it'd be good for our township residents. But again, you guys, you know, I'm one person on this board, so I, I will.
And, and grants for a few years could help them get to that point until those levies actually kick in.
Exactly right.
Well, I mean, has the villages been notified of our receipt of the lawyer's opinion and stuff, or no?
Not until this board.
So then maybe acknowledging, not necessarily a meeting per se, but maybe correspondence to them, you know, informing them of what our lawyers say, and, you know, reiterate that, you know, we have these grants available, and anybody who meets the qualifications of a grant or receiving a grant are welcome to apply, as we have done in the past. You know, we don't automatically approve every single grant that comes here, nor do we automatically rubber stamp amounts that are requested, so, you know.
I think that if we're going to sit down with the villages, that we should have them at a special open meeting, because I'm very disappointed with the way the villages handled us in relationship to us. You know, going to the paper first instead of coming over, walking across the hall and talking to us. Okay, so do we need an action on this, or Tim, do we have a motion? Do we need to take action, or do we have a motion?
I don't think we need to take action, other than if we're going to do a meeting, we just have to post a notice, a notice of it. And I, I don't think that's such a half-bad idea.
You know, because I think it should be, you know, open, you know, posted about us, you know, we'll find an agreed date between the villages, and I know it's probably towards the end of July, Vera, because you're.
Yeah.
Going away, the end of July, first of August. But I would like to see it to be an open meeting with that, and maybe even film, maybe we can get the film guys.
Well, when is the grant, the next grant application due? Is that August?
August, the August meeting.
So it's due the week before?
Sure.
So would we do August 1st, or are we saying?
Um, roughly. I mean, our August meeting will be on the 14th.
Oh, okay.
So actually, the grant applications are asked for a week in advance, around the 7th.
Is it our job to call this meeting, or is it the village's job to call this meeting?
Well, I think, I think they should be informed of, and then let's maybe go from there. I don't know if we should include something, an invitation to have a meeting in our correspondence, or if you just want to leave it at that and then see, you know, what the response is.
I think it's our job to extend the invitation to both villages and, you know, throw out some dates and see if they're, you know, are willing to do that. If they're not.
I want to do what we have to to get this issue passed and our residents the services that they require. So if it's an open meeting, let's do it. I'm all in favor. Let's push this.
And, you know, let's see, you know, if it can be filmed.
Yeah.
They, they can record it for the film, because I think this is an important issue. It was with the article in the landmark, you know, the residents are aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
And as I said, you know, maybe, you know, this can, is, I'm disappointed with the way the village handled it to begin with, so maybe this, you know, we can kind of reach out and start making amends.
Yeah, you know, there's a reason why fairy tales have poignancy, and this reminds me of the Three Little Pigs. I love Grimm's fairy tales, I love all those things.
Okay, why? Are we going to have this? Could you tell us why it reminds you of the Three Little Pigs? Because I'm not seeing the analogy.
Well, because the straw house, they threw it up, they didn't work, they spent their money, they're doing the fun stuff, and then the one pig in the brick house has the reserve fund, is spending their money.
Okay.
Responsibly doing things that are good governance, and they want to run into our house at the end of the day when the big bad wolf's coming.
It's a very good analogy. I never would have. Just probably know where they were going to be.
All of life's lessons are in fairy tales.
And maybe if, I mean, if we're going to do this open meeting, maybe we should have a representative from the WSSRA, you know, come and, and educate us on the programs and on the programs that they wish to provide.
The question I have for the WSSRA is, they, they appear to be very picky about their funding sources, and would they be happy with a funding source that's based upon grants that have to be approved every year, that the next board can be totally against? I, I just wanted, I think that's a great idea to invite them, so we can see what the parameters are, what can we do. I mean, we all want to do something, so let's figure out what we can do.
Right, yeah.
And get this moved on.
Okay, let me see what, what we can put together, if there's any. I'm looking at probably sometime either the week of the 16th or the 23rd of July, if we could pull something together at that point, or then we'd wind up going into the first week in August.
And that's going to be too late for a grant.
Yeah, August knows.
Right, so I would, I would suggest the second or third week of July would probably, you know, we have a couple of days in, in a fourth week if absolutely necessary, but I'd hate to have.
The village board meets on the first Thursday of the month, does anyone?
Yeah, because they just met.
They just, they just met.
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
And I presume that in the summer, they only do one a month, otherwise they, don't they do two a month? I know North Riverside does two a month, except.
I think they only do one a month.
Well, and North Riverside meets on the first and third normally, but in summer, they, they tend to meet on the second Monday of the month, so probably stick to maybe Tuesdays if that would work, Tuesdays or Wednesdays.
Could we, Tanali, say if they're available on the 24th of July?
I'm out after August.
Well, we're looking at July.
Looking at July, just really check their calendars.
Well, the thing is, is that we, we have to see if the village is even interested in this.
Right, yeah, that's what.
Then after, you know, Supervisor Wilt makes that contact with them and they are interested, then we can set a date and we can put it up, sign a genius and see who's available and who's not.
Sounds good.
It sounds good, but I think in our invitation to the villages, we should throw out one or two dates.
I agree.
You know, for them to do it, and.
I'll also have to check out what the availability of our rooms is.
Right, and the availability of the rooms, it makes a lot of things.
All right, we will do that.
So do we need a motion?
Um, I don't think we need a motion, just to try to set this up.
Okay.
Okay. Onward, I already mentioned the Town Hall building usage policy. Please review that and let me know so that I can get that over to our council.
One quick question, I don't want to spend all day here, just one quick question, because we will review this, but the highlighted portions of this, is there a particular issue?
I hold those because, that's because this is material that will go to the users and those are, oh, you mean the highlighted within the.
Right.
The schedule of fees.
Right.
I just wanted to get the basics there, and then everything else kind of went from there, because that kind of defines the kind of event, so that's what.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if this, you were making a notation.
No, yeah, I mean, I was highlighting that we can, we can eliminate that or we can keep that in, but I was just trying to keep focused in putting it all together.
All right. Is it only for township residents?
Well, it's, yes, that is the intent. I mean, we already do some events, as long as a nonprofit is heavily involved in this community, they might not be exclusively here.
Right.
But otherwise, yes. My, my proposal here, as I write it up, always presumes only a township resident or private parties can rent it.
So I have a. So I have a, my trade association does educational events all the time and they love the big room with the breakouts.
And that kind of thing, yeah.
Let's see, you'd be the township resident on that, am I right?
But even if I wasn't, even if I wasn't involved, would we still be open for that kinda? It, it's a nonprofit, it's a trade association, they wanna hold educational seminars, or it's the...
We've done that kind of educational thing before with things that somehow benefit the community.
Could we do like a, a special use permit for non-residents must be applied for and approved by the board?
We'd, we'd have to take a look at it on an individual basis, but it's very possible that we could do that kind of thing. We've had other nonprofits had their, um, brainstorming sessions here and things like that, so... Those, you know, and if it's during business hours, then a lot of this doesn't apply. If it's, doesn't involve alcohol, doesn't involve some of the extra services that evening weekend rentals do, then, you know, and there's a disclaimer at the beginning and describing the kinds of events. If, if it's going to be on a weekday, pretty much, yeah. So, I mean, if we needed to open up the building on a Saturday for this kind of training session, but if it's during the normal work, we're probably not. Okay? And do we, did we get...
I mean, I pass these.
Communication.
Um, I'll, this is, this is, uh, more content rather than, um, format. But this is just a start on what the content for the new township, uh, website is. You know, as I said, uh, under Riverside Township, I have About, Board Assessor Services, Events, Seniors Contact. And then, um, below the picture, um, I have what should be under those things. And actually, uh, I added a few more underneath that are not up on top yet. And while I was walking out to get my sweater, um, I thought of something else, but then it went out of my mind that I had forgotten to put on you.
Welcome to my club.
So, um, I, you know, I am open for, you know, and by the next meeting I can have, uh, underneath all these things, you know, a little bit more.
So this...
Mental Health Board.
Mental Health Board, I don't know, have that. And you know what, that's maybe what I thought of going out, so Mental Health Board, okay.
So this, this is some of what we're looking to have in the website.
Right.
Um, but this doesn't deal with our reaching out and asking for proposals?
No, not yet. This is, I wanna, uh, decide what we want in it first. And then, as I said, but then we can, um, let them kinda do the formatting of it.
That cuts your development costs way down. If you say, here, this is what I wanna go do it though.
Yeah, that's what we might.
Right.
So, um, and, um, you know, as part of that, we needed to, uh, we need to be able to update and add things very easily.
Right.
You know, maybe something, you know, once it's done.
Something that we can do in-house.
In-house that Andrew can do, like, once we approve the board meetings. And, um, you know, the agenda for the upcoming ma- meeting, uh, can go on there. You know, just like, uh, the, if we do end up having this meeting with both villages, um, you know, that could go on there.
Right.
Do you also want to post, uh, minutes on the meeting?
Approve minutes.
What about warrants?
You know, um, the warrants, um, are they listed in the minutes?
No, other than that we approve it.
Don't.
Is it, um...
What the amounts are?
The amounts are, I think, I think...
Maybe our annual budget.
Annual budget.
We could do the annual budget, that's what, um, the warrants. I would say as long as they're in the minutes and they're approved, the amounts, I would start out with that. And then, uh, unless, you know, we have many requests, you know, they can always, you know, come in and request that.
Now, one question I have is, we'll, we'll get a lot of proposals from people having our monthly maintenance and our outreach and our constant contact and our voter. I don't think we need that for our website. If we were a Schaumburg, Village of Schaumburg, we would need that kind of outreach. And I think we just need a standard website that allows people to get information.
Oh, I know, uh, the thing that, the grants. I don't know if we want, um, grants that, you know, dropped, you know, we do, like, grants.
Our grant, well, our grant application is on our website now.
Yeah, okay, so grants and the application, okay.
If you put your grants on there and a link to the grant recipient, um, that makes your website a lot easier to find.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So they say...
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Link to their websites, you mean, do hyperlinks?
Yeah. But I think, are we in agreement that we don't need the five hundred dollar a month, um, charge to reach out to our community? I mean, once we get it up and running and that is a concern and a need down the road, we could add that. But at this point, you know, WordPress or Squarespace, these kind of things, they're awesome. They're pretty, uh, inexpensive as well.
For what it...
Well, like, just a standard, uh, website that we can easily update.
Right, yes.
But I'd still wanna hire somebody to develop that, just to do it on a platform that, yeah, that allows for easy maintenance.
Right, yeah, as I said, but I, I just wanna give them the content and then they can format it.
Right.
And get the server to host it and, uh, hopefully teach Andrew how to, you know, make changes. You know, so once we have, you know, that, when the agenda goes up, he can post that, uh, he can post our approved minutes.
Right.
Some of the things that he's already doing now, but it's limited as to what he can do now.
And there is the, uh, signup option, which I think we should have. You don't have to necessarily take money on it, but they should be able to sign up for, oh, I wanna sign up for Jerry's class. I wanna sign up for the Springfield trip, um, just to...
But they don't need to sign up for the exercise class.
That's a walk-in.
Yeah, that's a walk-in thing, but, um...
Talk to the designer.
Yeah, we could talk to the, you know, if we do have trips or something.
Yeah.
Possibly, all right. Okay, so this is still somewhat a work in progress, let me know when you want, when you're ready to have us sit down and, and put together an RFP for, for some developments.
Right, that's what, and, um, I can, I will, uh, develop these things, the list of content and stuff, and then, uh, run it by you.
Okay.
All, and go to us, and I don't know if, uh, after I, when I do that, do you wanna have a quick meeting to go over it?
That'd be great.
Okay. What if, um, you're gonna be back when?
I'll be back in the office on the ninth.
Of July, okay.
And I would say before that, except for the schedules.
No, I, I probably won't get...
Schedule's a little full before that.
That's what, we won't, uh, make this, try to hit and squeeze in one more thing.
All right, then there's no action to be taken at this point?
No, that's what...
Then why don't we move on to new business? And I, let me move item C up above A because we have the individual that we have proposal from here and I need to keep him all evening. So, uh, if we could move the proposal for improvements to this room, maybe system. Um, you have material, um, in your binder.
Future technology systems.
And I'm stuck at the prevailing wage or this, did I miss something?
No, no, it's after there.
Should be right after this box, future technology systems, correct. So this would be, we talked about some, uh, in, when we passed the budget, we wanted to improve the technology in this room. And, uh, so we called in Alan Goodcase, who we've worked with before, who actually set up what we have here now, uh, most recently. And he's here in the room, so if you have any questions, um, the proposal is, I think, pretty reasonable. Uh, Alan's always been very fair with us and, uh, he came in to survey all of this. Some of it is dependent on what we find the wiring might be. And, um, Alan, would you like to speak to this at all, as to what, what your plan is? Just to give the kind of summary that you gave me the other day? And just identify yourself for the, for the camera.
Township approached me about, you know, ask about the projector.
Could you say your name?
Alan Goodcase, uh, future technology systems. And, um, uh, yeah, I've done quite a bit of work here and I do work next door. I was there today at the library and a lot of work over at RBHS and all that, uh, do with sound and, and the like. Um, I put this projector in here, uh, it's probably, I forget now, it's six or so years old. And the township expressed the fact that, that the DVD player, and they've got a, a VCR in there that's never used anymore, um, they'd really like to have a Blu-ray player and that sort of thing. And as we all know, uh, the one thing that makes your stereo obsolete is the video connections. The audio is just fine, you can take that old stereo and move it out to the garage for a garage sound system, but you can no longer use it for your main entertainment area because if it doesn't have the connections to connect to your TV, uh, and in this case, the connections to connect to the projector, um, you're, you, you don't, you don't have, you, you can't use it. And with everything going digital, now when you buy a Blu-ray player, there are no analog connections on there. There is no longer a video out, um, it's even difficult to get ones with audio out. So, um, and then, and, and then in researching the projector, I found that the projector here does not even have the proper connections for the input. The other issue is the wiring between the projector and that cabinet, uh, back there, uh, has to support those kinds of technology. And, um, don't know exactly what the wiring is and/or whether a new wire could be pulled through. There's, uh, ways of, uh, of converting, um, uh, an HDMI signal, if you know what that is, to a, to a network connection and then back to an HDMI. It's commonly done when you have to run it for a long way like this or whether, uh, whether you have, uh, connections that aren't, aren't HDMI compatible. So what I, what I intend to do is, uh, would be to take the projector out, take the equipment out of the cabinet, look at all the wiring, um, examine to see whether wiring can be pulled through. And if they can, being that I have it all out, I might as well pull a wire through there so that, you know, so they can be used. My objective is always to try to keep things as low cost as possible. So, uh, I have a history of doing that sort of thing. If someone else come to me and say, well, we want a whole new rack of equipment, and, and I'll end up reusing part of it because there's really nothing wrong with it and it could be just cleaned up and can be reused. So, uh, I'm very big on, um, on keeping things on the economical side. So what I'm proposing here is pretty much, as I outlined on the, um, on this sheet, is all the steps that I'd be taking as far as, uh, looking at all the wiring, taking everything out, seeing, you know, what it actually is here and where we're gonna go from that, from that point. As it happens a lot, these wiring, when they redo the room, they put the wiring in. They might have put a chase in for the wiring, like a tube that the wiring goes through. And if they did that, that'd be great, but, uh, hopefully I can find that out. In back of that cabinet, there's a screened area and then there's a void. And I intend to, when I get the equipment out, to be able to look up in there and see what's, what's, what's there. I also has, have equipment that I can actually trace a wire through a ceiling, through a wall. I hook something up to it and then I could take a thing and go beep, 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 and just follow it right through the wall. So I have a lot of things at my depo- disposal, I even have an endoscope that I could put up there and look into the ceiling. So, um, I love these kind of tools that save time and answer questions. And that's what I'll be employing, you know, when I come in here and explore and see what, where we're at right now. And then, uh, I also gave, um, Supervisor Vera about, uh, on, uh, a, um, an expected outcome of what, you know, what it would probably cost. And this would give you the guidance as to whether you even wanna embark on this at all. And, uh, what, uh, I, I projected is that, uh, for the various things that would be needed would be a new projector with the proper inputs, which would be a little brighter and nicer than the one that's up there now. Um, a thing called a media converter, uh, that would be what would convert the HDMI signal to some other kind of wire and then back to HDMI. And, um, an audio extractor, because as I said, the HDMI doesn't have an audio output. And there's an amplifier in there that needs audio. And it had been getting it from audio connections that won't be there anymore. So I actually put something in line that pulls the audio out of the HDMI connection so that it can be used. Uh, the Blu-ray player, uh, audio converter, which means that if I get a digital signal, I can convert it to analog. Uh, and then just various cables and connectors, and I estimated that to be about sixteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then, uh, for the installation and programming and, and training, whatever is needed for my time, would be about five hundred dollars.
So right now, we're really just looking at the three hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, right now, we're at the three hundred and eighty dollars just to find out where we're at.
Which will get us then to more detailed...
Way of vision.
Okay, um, what about, this has nothing to do with Wi-Fi or is it possible to get Wi-Fi in here? Or is that something we would do?
Well, if, if the Blu-ray players, if you need a Wi-Fi access to Blu-ray player, if you wanna, I mean, what would be the wife, intention of having the Wi-Fi?
We just want better Wi-Fi throughout the build and...
And that's a separate, that's a separate issue, right. We're, we need some, probably some repeaters or...
Yeah, Wi-Fi as it applies to AV is usually, you know, for streaming things. And I don't know whether you would be using streaming in there, that sort of thing. The Blu-ray players come with that. Usually I recommend that if somebody wants to do streaming, they do it with like an Apple TV box or some other Roku boxes, some, uh, one that's dedicated to that.
But this is not, this is not to go...
But that's not part of this, no. I didn't, I couldn't make it part of this, but that, it's not part of this.
Right.
Um, and my other question is, you were talking about having all those wires in a tube. If they're not in a tube, would you put them in a tube or...
Well, no, the tube would be part of the architectural, you know, uh, makeup of the, of the room when they... I don't know what they did when they improved the room. I would love to see pictures of the room when it was torn up and before they finished the ceiling and all that, if such photos existed, uh, because that would give me some insight. Otherwise, I'd just have to do all that investigation and kinda see where we're at.
So tonight, are we looking for a motion on to...
On the thirty-eighteenth.
Thirty-eighteenth, yeah, make a motion.
I have a question.
Oh.
Uh, first, I always, you can always tell when a man loves his job, because he only charges you what he needs. So I like your prices, they're very nice. I have a question, when you're, when people come, at least to the Village of Riverside for public comment, they're unable to bring a thumb drive and have their presentation go through the system. You have to get it to the village twenty-four hours ahead of time and they have to upload it. Is that gonna be rectified with this new system? Can you bring a thumb drive? Can you bring your phone to stream?
Well, the, the projectors have a lot of connections on them, the new, new projectors. They'll have a projector, uh, they would have a USB type of, of connection. That would be another connection that I would have to bring off of the projector. Some projectors, not the one I specified here, but some projectors do have Wi-Fi built into the projector so that you could send content to the projector from a laptop or tablet, that sort of thing. Those, that is available.
I think we currently, if we do that kind of thing, uh, we have, we have some equipment on a cart that...
Yeah, you have that projector on a cart.
There's a rolling cart that...
They do it on that wall, so it's a different system altogether.
Well, I mean, we usually, this is the projection law we generally use. But for example, this past week, uh, last week for our moving day on Thursday, of course, that morning, we got notified that the power would be turned off for a period of time that day. got notified that the power would be turned off for a period of time that day, sometime between, I believe it was between one and, eleven and four, or something like that. And it would be off for about an hour and a half to reconnect some power to Riverside Law, of course. And of course, about, we therefore tried to go around those possibilities because the village does have a generator. So, we brought out the cart, put the movie on the projector on the cart, plugged into the village, and when the power went out, the movie kept going.
Oh, wow. Hey, that's wonderful.
So, thank you to the Village of Riverside for allowing us to tap in to that power, to their power that day, because the rest of us were doing whatever we could do on paper without a computer.
Yeah, wow.
And it wasn't that long, it was only about forty minutes ultimately, but right in the middle of the movie.
The only question is, is this a cost sharing between us and the village?
Only in that the village uses this, this room for its meetings as well, so if they needed to use the projection stuff, it's not a cost sharing per se. It's our building, we're providing the technology.
So, I move that we accept the proposal at four hundred and thirty-five dollars?
Four hundred and thirty-five.
Four hundred and thirty-five.
Plus sixty-five.
Three hundred and eighty.
Okay. You gotta include the cable or something.
So, why don't you make it not to exceed?
Not to exceed four thirty-five.
Four fifty?
Four fifty.
That's it?
Yes. So, I move that we accept the proposal not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second to accept the proposal for future technology systems for a, an exploratory of the boardroom AV wiring and not to exceed four hundred and fifty dollars. Are there any questions to the motion? Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the motion?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Just a quick question, do you come to these houses?
I, I do, here, want my card.
Yes.
Do residential. I do residential. I, I love home theater.
Thanks for coming in, Alan.
Thanks, Alan.
You too.
Okay, then back to agenda item A, under new business. It's that time of year when we must pass a prevailing wage ordinance. And so, you have the, it's the standard language. Basically, we agree that we would pay the prevailing wage for big projects as, and we would only contract with contractors that would pay the prevailing wage. There's all kinds of things in the act that we either must or don't have to do. For example, we may remember last year when we got a new landscaper landscaping, cutting grass and things like that do not fall under the prevailing wage act.
Landscaping.
Yeah, landscaping, grass cutting, if it's major landscaping, then it does, but.
Can I make a motion that we accept the prevailing wage ordinance?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to adopt the prevailing wage ordinance.
For two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand eighteen, and I'm not sure what the additional number on that is. And then the clerk would certify, and we would present a public notice. I have a motion and a second. Clerk Blau, would you take the roll?
Do we have a question period?
Sure, do you have it? Any question?
We are told to vote on this, but we don't have a choice in it. Is that correct?
Well, sort of.
That's about it, Tom, yeah.
You're right, it's about it.
That's pretty much, it's one of those things that a, that a governmental entity really needs to do.
Yeah, I, I've been fighting prevailing wage my entire professional career. It is, when people talk about corruption in Illinois, it is prevailing wage. That is where the corruption comes from in Illinois. Labor in Illinois is sixty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. The labor prevailing wage in Indiana is ten dollars and thirty cents.
Wow.
An average labor rate in Cook County in the private sector is about twenty dollars, with wages and benefits. I am uncomfortable voting on something that, A, I don't have a choice to vote on, and B, I feel is the basic corruption of our democratic system. And I'm doing that to get it on the record, so.
Okay.
It's on the record.
It is on the record, thank you very much.
And my, my high horse is now getting put back in the park.
Okay, wow, very good. Then Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Abstain.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And as I said, the audit is actually already underway, but I thought you should see that we did receive the engagement letter. And it, it arrived a little bit late this year, otherwise I think I would've had it on last month's agenda already. I think last year, it may have been in the agenda already.
And this charge has remained constant, correct?
They're relatively constant. Every few years, they start upping it, but we also have taken some action that helps to keep those costs down, so that they don't have to increase it. For example, they, the custom used to be that the person from their office who came in here to gather all this data would make copies on our machine, then take those copies back to their office, scan them so that they would have them electronically, because we didn't have them electronically. We did some of that ourselves, things that I had electronically rather than her copying. I said, "Whoa, whoa, I'll just send it to you electronically." And some things we're gonna go forward, and things like minutes, we will be keeping electronically for that purpose. So, that, that saves a little time.
It has a reasonable fee.
Pardon?
It's a very reasonable fee.
It is, it is, really. I mean, we don't have that, we're not that complex in our.
Right.
Funding, and it's not a, you know, if we were a bigger township, it might be a bigger fee as well. The next item, if.
So, wait, do we need a motion on that?
I'm sorry, right. Just to cover it. Well, it, it is an expenditure, I suppose we should.
But that, that, well, I.
Yeah, it's an expenditure for the audit, and I, I think I would feel better if we actually approved it, even if it's already underway. So, do I hear a motion to engage Sullivan Fox for the annual township audit?
So, moved. Oh, you said, Tom could second?
I'm gonna engage Sullivan Fox. And I'll second it.
Okay. You have a motion and a second to engage Sullivan Fox for our annual township audit. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next.
You signed this one, right?
I think so. Okay. I'll, I'll check, yeah. Oh, yeah, that one, I'm sorry. Yes, I did sign that, actually. I already did. Okay. Proposal to offer dental and vision benefits to the township staff. I had mentioned this previously when we were doing some budget discussion, and we don't have a lot of people, but it would be offered, it's only available for full-timers. You have both the proposal for the Delta Dental and for the VSP Vision. If all our full-timers were to, were to take advantage of this, you can see what the, the costs would be. I tried to keep it as simple as possible. I have been told already, although the, the administrators of the plan have not come in yet to discuss it, when I indicated that we were going, when they saw that we were putting this in the proposal for tonight's meeting, I already had one person who says, "I don't need it, I already have those coverages." However, nothing is forever, so this would be a policy. This does not include either the supervisor or the assessor, even though we may be paid somewhat of a full-time pay by the, by the ordinance or the resolution passed last year or twenty sixteen. In anticipation of elections, they're, the only things that can be paid are in that resolution, and benefits are not part of that. The only benefit available to elected officials is participation in the pension plan through IMRF.
So, this is, but this is in our budget?
Yes, when we set the budget right, we anticipated that in the budget.
Do you need a motion to accept this?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we offer dental and vision insurance to full-time township employees.
Thank you, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and second to offer vision and dental coverage to the full-time township employees. Would you please call the roll, Clerk Blau?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
No.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. The next item, so motion is carried. Next item is regarding the organization that provides, they, they work with a lot of municipalities. You can see that in their presentation letter. They actually took me through an illustration of the system. It is very intuitive, very simple to use, and it allows us to, on a regular basis, access, they, they already do all the research with the county, and they can provide us not only excel spreadsheets that give us a lot of information about new residents in the community, but they also, it also generates labels right away, so that we could send welcome packages or do anything that way. That new homeowner list would cost three hundred and seventy-five dollars per year, flat rate, no, that's it.
No.
And, like I said, it, we could just, can just pull up our township, and I, I was able to do that because they record all of it, whether anybody's subscribing to it or not, so I was able to see all the information that was there, and it was, it was very easy to use and.
And we would send them welcome packets?
We could send welcome packets or whatever we wanted to do, communicate with people, engage the community. It would be, you know, even, I spoke actually with the assessor, and she, she also would see use in utilizing it, and we can add as many users as we want for that fee. So, her staff could do it, reach out to new people, add them to her demographic, demographics.
Yeah, I make a motion that we subscribe to this new homeowners list.
In the amount, in amount of what?
Three hundred and seventy-five. Three hundred and seventy-five dollars per year.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to subscribe to the new homeowners list through Record Information Services at three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
I think it's a great, great, great idea.
Could I make a request? And then we find out how other townships are utilizing this. Obviously, the new, the welcome basket is one thing, but I said there's a lot of different ways we could utilize this.
Right, absolutely. I can, I can reach out to some of those. We have, you can see Downers Grove Township is part of it, Lyden Township, a lot of state representatives utilize it, so certainly we can, we can find out exactly what else they do with it, but the other thing, the, the same company, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we didn't take.
We didn't vote on it, yes, I'm sorry. So, Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on that?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, the other thing, and I, this is a little bit more expensive, but it's still very reasonable, would allow for quick background checks, and it, what I like about this, I have tried out, when I do general assistance or emergency assistance, sometimes you just, you know, you're, you have to listen to your gut, sometimes they just don't feel right. And even if they do feel right, you know, it's always good to double-check and make sure that the people aren't scamming the system, that they're, that they actually are residents, that the documentation that they present to me, you know, is valid and so forth. I have tried some of the other kinds of services that you can do online. Basically, you know, the ones that pop up when you look up somebody, and every time, you know, I've tried like the free things, and, and of course, immediately, "Oh, well, to get that, you need our gold package." And then, you know, if you do the gold package, then suddenly you need the platinum, and then you'll need the diamond, and, you know, it's like every time you want a bit of information, it gets you to a new place, and it gets quite annoying then if you do subscribe to it, that, then, then you have pop-ups on your computer all the time, it's just.
Does it say how much it is per check? Yeah, that's what.
No, it's actually a flat fee, and I could check as many as I want, and it's four hundred and eighty-four dollars per year.
Really?
If you think that this is worth it and we need it, then let's go for.
Yes, and, and this one I would pay out of the general assistance, because that's where I see us using background checks. I think that that's an appropriate expenditure out of there.
I make a motion that we subscribe to the Quick Background Checks program.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to subscribe to the Quick Background Checks, Check Illinois program at a cost of four hundred and eighty-four dollars per year, and that would be for the general assistance purposes. Any questions? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, and I already touched on the township, we don't have any action to take on that. I thank you for your input on some of those things. For your information, there's also information on the various parades taking place on Independence Day, and so, know that we have been registered for all of them. Tim Hollenbach will be the lead on the parade for us. Thank you very much for doing that.
The leader of the parade.
Leader of the parade, and you will, you will be getting reminders through the, the system that Andrew can text you.
Same thing as last year, we do Riverside, we get the Curry Motors cars. Well, we're, we're working on that, Trustee Drapka is.
I'm working on it.
He's working on that, so.
Because he's not gonna be here, right?
Yeah, but I'm supposed to.
Yeah, okay, so it's Tim, Tom, and I.
And Fran.
And Fran. Oh, and Leanne, okay.
No, for North Riverside, we used to use my, my pickup truck, so if we don't have anything else set up, we can use that.
That'll work, okay.
That will work, yeah. And then, we all do Riverside, and then we split up.
Right.
Tom, you and I did Brookfield.
I go to Brookfield also.
You do Brookfield also, okay, so then, I can do either one. Which is, so if you guys wanna do Brookfield, or, and you want me to go with Leanne and Fran and I do Riverside, or?
We do Brookfield. Yeah, I do Brookfield, yeah, automatically, yeah, but Roz, uh, well.
We got lost last time.
Whatever, whatever you come up with this one. If you want us to take a car to go in North Riverside, we could do that, too.
Well, we'll see what happens.
We'll see what happens, okay, and we can, we don't probably really need to decide this today.
We could all.
And the magnetic signs have been ordered, they should be arriving shortly. So, everybody's names will say Riverside Township Trustee or Riverside Township.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yes, and, right, so there are brand-new signs on their way.
You do them.
Yes. All right. Is there anything else?
Yes, of course, I have something additional. We've had teenagers hanging out around the piano and that kind of thing. Have we thought about renting the piano for lessons to someone? I, I just think that asset out there could be great, better utilized. If kids want to hang out there and play music, maybe we give them an option on how to get that done.
Can look into it.
Put it on your plate, sorry.
That's all right.
If we rented it out, we can't, that would be a for-profit thing.
Right.
And I don't, and I don't think we can do that.
I think that's just. I think it's just...I think the piano was incidental to that, and it was only the one time I got them utilizing it. Really, it's more a matter of, I'm not anxious to have the liability of an unsupervised building having youngsters hanging out in it, and that's...
And mention the word piano lessons to any kid, they...
That's a way to keep them out.
That's the way to keep them out of here.
You want to be on the second floor, you must.
If you show up, you will be wearing a piano. The other one is that bell power and the bell up there, does that still work? What is the...
The chime, the clock? I don't think it's...I don't...I have to double-check.
All my friends who grew up in town remember it.
Yes, well, and it was activated at one point. I really have...I have to check whether it's working now or not, to be honest with you. Offhand, I'm not certain. I know that it was reactivated within the last 20 years, and it was...was working, and the clock keeps pretty good time, and the only thing is that we don't...I think that the issue may be not having it chime 24 hours a day, because we do have residents right across the street and so forth, so I will check on it.
That would be nice.
I haven't been hearing it chime, so I'm thinking not.
Right. You're hearing, you're hearing.
So... And also, I'd like to just mention that the Riverside Township Lions Club is planning Scuff Gross Memorial Regatta, and they're going to kayak down the river and come under the Swinging Bridge and then end up somewhere a little ways down the river.
Just before the other bridge, I think, at Ogden, I think, somewhere along there.
And they're starting at McCormick Woods, which I'm not sure where that is. Is that...
McCormick Woods is...
North Riverside.
Isn't that by St. McPoel?
Yeah, it's North Riverside.
Not North Riverside.
No, Lions.
Isn't that on 31st and...
Yeah.
31st and First Avenue.
Yeah, it's by First Avenue there. I think it...
Oh, it's probably across from the St.
The west side of the river, just between First Avenue and, like, near the zoo.
Oh, okay. Oh, we're the Scout Cabin then, right? It's on...
No, it's the opposite side of the river from the Scout Cabin. So, McCormick Woods is like...
Oh, at first...
I think it's Zoo Woods is directly east.
Ogden and First?
Ogden and First, I think, is McCormick.
Is it McCormick Woods? It's not for...
I don't know where it is.
Okay, well, anyways...
You know what? We have a...I think we have a forest preserve map in the hallway, you can check that briefly.
Just to let you know that they're...they're going to start their kayak, and they're going to come, and they...they have a banner that they're going to hang on the bridge.
On the...on our Swinging Bridge.
On our Swinging Bridge, and they want a lot of people on that day on the Swinging Bridge, and they're going to have a photographer.
What day is it?
Sunday, June 24th, and I believe they're starting at 10:00.
Again, there's a poster on the door, as you leave.
Yeah, so I just want to make you aware of that, and maybe next year, that's something that we could sponsor the banner, and then we could have our name on it.
There you go.
Because this year, the American Legion sponsored one half, but the cost was $300, and the American Legion sponsored half of it, and the Lions Club paid for half of it.
Right.
I could mention to the organizer that you could write a grant for that $300.
The next year. Yeah, he did approach me for permission to hang it on the bridge, which I had no objection, however, they also have to apply for...with the village, because it is signage. So...all right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, Lawrence.
Hang the second there.
I'm shirking my responsibility there.
Okay. Trustee Clark?
I move that the board authorize and ratify the payments of the bills identified on the general warrant, June 2018, in the amount of $11,513.40. Director...
Do I hear a second?
I second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the general warrants for June 2018 in the amount of $11,513.40. Please call the roll.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. I make a motion that the board ratify and authorize the payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. Payroll warrant, $17,480.40. Health warrant, $1,609.90. General assistance, $3,462.97. Township radio players, $200, and food pantry, $72.
And my papers stuck together, so there is a utility warrant also of $2,596.31.
And add the utility warrant, $22,000...
Did you say $2,596.31?
$2,596.31, correct. Okay. I have a motion on those warrants, do I hear a second?
I second.
I have a motion and second on the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of $2,596.31. Payroll warrant in the amount of $17,480.40. Health warrant, $1,609.90. Grants, $30,734. General assistance, $3,462.97. Radio...township radio players, $200. Food pantry, $72. Please call the...Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on those warrants?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Luthfer?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.